Going through everything thoroughly to make sure that it's captured. All right, so. Let's approve the minutes of March 10, 2020 first. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve those minutes? Okay, that was Jonathan.
Second.
Second. Is that Diana?
Okay. All right, Chairman Allegra.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Gary Negritz.
Yes.
Rule.
Yes.
John Pepietro. Matthew. Matthew Bandow.
Yes.
Daniel Pearlman.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so before we actually get to non-agenda items, I think it's probably best to just, for the record, state that the following applications are going to be carried to our next, our meeting on May 26. And that's Julie Ludwig. At 299 Richards Road. Justin and Anna Minger at 590 Cliff Street. Ed Jaton and Kimberly Brodeur at 58 Wildwood Road. Those are all going to be carried to May 26. Furthermore, and those will be carried, no additional notice required, and. Not in this room, but.
7:30 PM.
At 7:30 PM. The following applications will be carried to June 9. That's. Paul Ashado, 302 Prospect Street. Daniel Perman, 247 Oak Street. John and Kelly Gazini, 523 Lotus Road. Victor Sanchez, 11 Randolph Place. And Jovan and Alethea Phillips, 367 Marshall Street. All of those are going to be carried to June 9, 2020, again via Zoom. No further notice required, 7:30 PM. The matter of Patrick and Adele Higgins, 29 North Pleasant Avenue, has been withdrawn. And so there, that will not be carried to any additional date. Jane, do I have all that correct?
Yes. Except the June 9 one is not, no, I don't believe at this point, so.
Say again?
I said, I thought you said the June 9 one was via Zoom, and it will not be via Zoom. Or it may be, but if it is, we're going to have to carry them again, so. They are being carried till we don't have a Zoom meeting.
So if we don't, I'm just a little confused, why wouldn't we have a Zoom meeting and hear them on the night?
Because they noticed for a court meeting.
It would all have to renotice again individually.
Right.
Okay, do these applicants all know that?
Yes.
Okay, and so if they renotice, will they all be carried to the same meeting, or depending on when they notice, they'll be assigned a date?
So.
I'm sorry, Jane, I didn't catch up.
I didn't hear your question to me.
Oh, sorry. So the question is, they're all currently scheduled for June 9. To be held at the court, we probably are not going to be able to do that. So they're going to have to probably be rescheduled to Zoom. Will they all be rescheduled to the same Zoom date, or will it depend on when they, when they notice?
Um. We would schedule them all to the same date.
Do we have a tentative date?
Unless you know when we're going to be allowed to have one in the courtroom. Right now, we're going to have to, I don't know if we're going to have to keep it on June 9, and then do it again, Bruce, I don't know.
I think what's going to happen is each applicant is going to have to make a decision as to whether they want to wait until they can go back into council chambers, or do they want to participate with a Zoom, and then they have to renotice and republish. So there's an expense involved that an applicant might say at this point, let me wait until I can have a meeting in the council chambers and put me off. Others that are in a hurry may say, hey, I want to do it, and they'll spend the money to renotice. Excuse me, it's, the certified mail's have to go again, but they also have to publish again with a Zoom meeting notice in the newspaper.
Yeah, okay, good. And that, that actually, that's, I should have asked the question a little bit more clearly, because that was my, my thought, which is, not everyone is going to make that same decision. So some of these will come back perhaps at the same future meeting via Zoom, but some may decide, no, you know what, we're going to wait, and I want to have an option for court. Okay.
Correct.
All right.
Um, Sergio. Sergio. Can I ask, Bruce, can I ask a question about one of the existing applications that would have happened tonight, just to maybe get some clarification on before they come back in front of us? Or should I table that till they come?
You could ask the question. Which one is it?
It's just a question on, yeah, it's on the, I'm sure everybody noticed on the 58 Wildwood Road application. In the architectural, in the drawings from Roger Slick, it shows dormers, existing dormers to remain. But the photos that they actually sent don't have dormers on the photos unless I'm not looking at it correctly.
Well, if you look at, if you look at the photo. I guess it's maybe what he calls a dormer. If you look on the roof line. There is windows that go above the roof line, out, out of the roof. He might consider those to be dormers. It's on the first page of the page of the photos. You see it in the two pictures on the right side.
Right, both the, on the architectural drawing, it's under. Yeah, it's under the top left photo, which would be the rear elevation, I assume. And I don't see dormers.
So I see a dormer in the front.
Yeah, it's a window dormer, really.
Yeah.
It goes up in the bottom two photos.
Yeah.
But it's really just a window dormer, it's a pop-up on the window head. There's one on the side there, a three-window, and then there's a two-window on the next one over the, on the two bottom drawings, or two bottom photos.
Right, but on the, on the actual drawings from Roger, there's two dormers in the middle of the roof. And it says existing.
They could have been something. But they could be something that was as of right from the building department. We'd have to check if they're on construction.
I'll let him get it clarified.
I have two pictures there I received from Jane that show dormers on the back, back of the house, right above where the extension's going to be for the kitchen. Where do you get that photo?
Maybe I'm just missing those.
We could ask them to clarify at the meeting. Okay.
All right. Well, we can send them a note asking them to clarify so that when they come to the meeting, it's done.
Right, because one picture with four, one page with four pictures on it doesn't show it, but then I have a separate, two separate pictures of the back of the house do show the dormer. So.
Yeah, it's.
Which picture is correct? Or what is this first picture? Something from stock, maybe, or the file?
Why don't we just have a little go back to him and ask him to be prepared to clarify it?
Yeah, qualify his pictures.
Makes sense. Yeah, let's just have him clarify. Okay, so. What I would like to do, Bruce, tell me if this is okay, for the benefit of Mr. and Glima. I'd like to move to the bottom of the agenda, which is memorializing the resolution for Morafiev. And then once, and Smillion, and once we do those, Mr. Glima's welcome to stay, but he could drop if he'd like, and then we could move up to comments. And then we could, you know, essentially go over what we were going to talk about. Is that all right?
That works. That's perfect.
All right, so Jane, could we, will you memorialize those two resolutions now, please?
Okay, so first we'll do the Morafiev one, 525 North Maple Avenue. Greg Brown.
Yes.
Gary Negritz.
Yes.
Diana Rule.
Yes.
Matthew Bandow.
Yes.
Daniel Pearlman.
Yes.
Okay. And then we have the Smylon Resolution, 643 Ellington Road. Greg Brown.
Yes.
Gary Negritz.
Yes.
Diana Rule.
Yes.
John Pepietro.
Yes.
Matthew Bandow.
Yes.
Daniel Pearlman.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so that's the resolution.
Sign those and send them to me.
Yes. Taking notes here. All right, so why don't we then move up to non-agenda items? Are there any members of the public who would like to make comments on matters not on the agenda this evening? There being none?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we'll move on to board.
Just recommend, Sergio, the course I took said that when you ask for public comment, that we wait a couple of minutes to see if somebody has to try to get on, or somebody makes a phone call at that time, so we should just take a pause and see if anything comes in. We're not expecting it, but it's just a good procedure.
There's two people on, do you want me to allow them to talk?
We'll give it two minutes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because there are people who are on. I didn't see.
Yes.
There's a Robert.
Hello.
Lima. Hello?
Yes, how are you? Good evening. Thank you very much for moving that resolution up.
My pleasure.
Okay, have a great evening.
You too. Thank you, have a good night.
Bye now.
Thank you.
That was Robert and Glima.
No, Robert and Glima is still logged on, hold on.
Was there one? You know.
It looked like he, it looked like he was on his computer but called in separately.
Ah, so that's what it was, all right, yeah, because he hasn't allowed me to talk.
Probably in twice.
Now he's gone now.
Oh, there it is.
He's gone.
And he's gone. All right, so there's no one else on. Obviously, if somebody dials in and wants to make a comment, we could always, you know, let them do so. But for now, we're moving on to board member comments, non-agenda items. I think at this point, what I was hoping would be that maybe Bruce could just give the board a little bit of, some of the experience he's had with the Zoom meetings he's had with other land use boards. Some do's, don'ts, best practices.
Sure. Starting out, one of the important parts is even though we're seeing each other, it's very important to identify yourself more so than ever, so. For instance, you'd say, okay, this is Sergio Allegre, and here are the comments I have. When you're making comments for your decision and things like that. It's, it just helps the record be clearer and do it that way. You need to know that for, any applicant that comes forward and is presenting their case, they are going to go through their exhibits, and they're going to do it just as we were all in the, in the room. One person speaking at a time. The only exhibits that they can reference will be those that have been posted 48 hours in advance of the hearing. So, you know, the applicant that gets up and says, oh, by the way, I had took a couple of photos this afternoon, and I'd like to show them to you of the neighboring properties. That cannot be used, and if they want to use it, we have to carry the meeting to a new meeting for purposes of having them introduce that in evidence. And that would be the same, and we'll have to see how we deal with it. If we get to the point where we have someone in opposition or someone that wants to make comment, and they haven't posted the exhibit or given the exhibit to the town in advance, and they tried to do it that night. We will have to carry that meeting to give them the opportunity at a future meeting to present that and then have it posted. That's going to probably get an applicant very upset for a quote neighbor or somebody in opposition or somebody that has a comment to make that, you know, they didn't follow the rules, so to speak. But the rules are so new and so unknown to the general public. I took this seminar for three hours about this, these type of meetings, just with land use boards. And you need to understand that there's three different laws that we have to follow as a land use board for virtual meetings. We have the Open Public Meetings Act. We then have a statute that pertains to the due process provisions such as a person needing to be sworn in needs to stand and raise their right hand. We will recognize that can't be done if someone calls in and just has a telephone in their hand. So we're going to have to circumvent that for the time being. No one has an answer as to whether that's right or wrong. But then most importantly, we have to follow the requirements of the municipal land use law. And municipal land use laws, rules are much more stringent than a council meeting for a mayor and council, because we've got sworn testimony, we've got witnesses. It's a very, very different animal. So the general consensus after the three hours with the seminar I was at is that the more complicated application should be held in abeyance if the applicant will agree to it until we can get back in a room and, and do it that way, because it'll be, with this type of a virtual meeting, it becomes more cumbersome. But we cannot stop an applicant to insist upon having a hearing. There's a, the municipal land use law says that we have to make a decision within 120 days, or it's an automatic approval. There's a bill pending that should be passed in the next couple of days, it's going to extend that to probably 180 days. Just because they're recognizing that these complicated ones really don't work in the virtual meeting aspect. The, as an overview of it, as an applicant's attorney. Every one of my applicants so far has said, I'm going to sit back and wait and be patient because the virtual meeting has so many pitfalls. An applicant with anything that's a bit complicated is really looking at that application and saying, hey, I don't want it to go up on an appeal, because that takes me, that'd be a year and a half before we have a decision. It's better if I could wait a couple of months, assuming it's only a couple of months till we get back to some type of normalcy in a, in a meeting room. We follow the same aspect we do all the time after each applicant, we ask the questions. We should identify ourselves when we're asking the question. And then we take those answers in, and then we've got to do the same general overview with the public. What I've found so far is that meetings and presentations can take longer. So we'll, we're taking baby steps. This actually worked out, I think, pretty well in getting used to it tonight rather than actually having applications. So the, the concept behind not having the applications tonight is because they were not posted in the proper spot for the members of the public. That's a DCA rule. So as I said, there's three different rules. We've got the Open Public Record Act or Public Meeting Act. We have a municipal land use law, and then the DCA set down a whole set of guidelines to try to cover these virtual meetings. But the DCA rules are just mainly rules that they've come out with, it's not a law. So the DCA made certain suggestions, and during the course of the seminar, we said, yeah, but that violates a law in the municipal land use law, so municipal land use law prevails. So that's an overview of it. The, the concept that someone doesn't. Those people that have noticed for a meeting already, but it's not a Zoom meeting, as I said earlier, they will have to go back and renotice. Jane's got an app with a notice out for every one of our meetings, and she publishes the list of our meetings at the beginning of the year. And then can just publish a simple agenda, now she's doing it with a Zoom and an ID number each time. One of the things Sergio and I kicked around, and it's just something to think about, it's not something you have to make a decision on, yeah, we can all weigh in on it. If there becomes this backlog, and it's happening at all these boards. We might want to consider, based on your schedules, of scheduling an additional meeting sometime. Some towns have talked about taking perhaps even a Saturday just to clean up their agenda and do it. One board member said to me, I really wouldn't mind doing a Saturday because there's not a lot else to do. There's no Little League game this spring, so it's just a thought. Probably best Jane and I work on it, on just looking at this, and she sent me a list already of the list of the, of these applications, and just see how we can better streamline it. Because you do have members of the public that are going to want to, even if it's complicated, want to probably proceed only because they're trying to get on with, especially, you know, the residents, which is 95% of what we see. You know, they want to get a decision as to what they can do on, on the house they're living in. And that's become probably all more important than it's been before. So that's basically an overview of it. I think you see, it's cumbersome because of the procedure that we are required by law to follow. But it's not impossible.
All right, thank you, Bruce. Anybody have any opinions on Bruce's comment regarding holding additional meetings to try to clear the backlog?
I think we have to do something.
We can hold it. We can get enough people to be a quorum. It would be good to fill in the gaps, and I'm open to any day of the week that we can agree on. But as a safety valve, not necessarily a regular occurrence, because then it becomes a regular occurrence for the applicant. So as a backup or alternate to add to and clear a backlog for Jane, sure, I'm okay doing it.
Gary, I think you were jumping in as well.
Yeah, I just think we have a responsibility to the public, you know, to try and clear these things. And they didn't create the problem. So if we can get a, as John says, if we get a quorum together. I'm willing to participate on just about any night you want to pick, or afternoon, or whatever. I happen to have the luxury of not being employed, so.
So you're flexible, is what you're saying? Anyone else?
I'm, I'm open, it's. Go ahead, sorry. I was just going to say, I'm, I'm open. I love Zoom.
Diana, sorry, what you were saying?
I said I'd be open for another night, not in the middle of the day, Gary, sorry.
All right.
It's all right with me.
Matthew, how about you?
Weekends work very well. Weekends work very well for me. Certain nights of the week could as well, it just depends on the particular week.
Okay, and how about Dan?
I would prefer nights over weekends.
Okay, well, so it sounds like, you know, it sounds like probably weeknights would work. You know, we'll see, Matthew, what, what nights work best for you as well. But fortunately, we're not, we're not beholden to the, you know, the schedule at the, at the courthouse where, you know, we've got to deal with the municipal court, the planning board, the village council, et cetera. We can hold a Zoom whenever is convenient for us, providing, you know, we provide the adequate notice to the applicants. I mean, I, I would be in favor of more meetings for a shorter period of time than having less meetings that go three, four hours. I know that we, some boards have talked about relaxing the curfew and maybe going later into the evening. But I don't know. I've, I've, I've got a tension span of a certain amount of time on Zoom. And I don't know that starting at 7:30 and ending at 11, 11:30 is something that, that I want to do. I'd rather have, you know, more frequent meetings and maybe, you know, keep them to like two hours. And, and just try to plow through some of this backlog. I don't know what, what people feel about that.
I might have missed this. What, what's our backlog at right now? How many, how many applications are we currently looking at? You can rough, I mean, 20?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have it in front of me, it's on my desk at work, but there's probably about 18 or 19 applications out there that have to be heard.
What, what's our usual, what's our standard backlog?
That's actually kind of normal right now, like from 12, 12 to 18. I am kind of worried about what's going to happen when the lit hall opens to the public and people can start bringing things in. I think, I think there might be quite a few at once being, being submitted, so if that happens.
I would only say, and I think John mentioned this, you know, I would only caution, particularly if you're going to start doing things on the weekend, which, which I'm not a fan of for, because I don't want to have to hire a divorce attorney. But other than that, the, you know, if you're going to start having special meetings. I, I would set sort of an expectation of a backlog, like once we get down. Because as, as I think John mentioned, people then say, oh, you know, Tuesday night's still, you know, work for me. You know, Friday would be better, so, and I think you've done some historically, and so I'd like a Friday night, or I'd like a Saturday morning. And I, I think you have to identify, we're here, we need to get here, and so we'll have an extra meeting, but that's just my, my thoughts on it.
I'm thinking the same way. As needed, if we have a backlog or if we have a number of small, simple cases like the ones we had tonight. If we have three, four, five of those, then maybe we could do an extra day or two and handle two at a time. And so the virtual online meeting goes quickly to clear the backlog, but I wouldn't want it to be a regular occurrence because then public would start to rely on it. And that would take more time for us, but more time for our board secretary as well. So as needed, to fill in gaps and simple applications that could be done easily online here, that would be the ideal thing. But it would be an option that we would use, Jane would use, if she sees the need, coordinate with Bruce, and then we'll ask the applicants, would you like to do a virtual online, or do you want the option of having a in-person one? That's still the question for the applicant to answer, even if we offer these alternate meetings.
So, so here is my suggestion now that I've heard you. Go ahead, yes, Gary.
In your experience, because this is our first. What's it take? About an hour for a relatively straightforward residential variant?
Here is the interesting thing about these meetings. In some instances, they are much shorter than when everybody's in the same room, believe it or not. And then there's other meetings where they shouldn't have been shorter. And then there's other meetings where they shouldn't have been shorter, but just for the collaboration, it wound up getting longer than it should have been. So I don't have enough. I can't, I can't put, I can't say what the average is anymore because it's it's been odd in the things that I've seen. Here's my suggestion based on your comments. There is no way that an applicant could get a notice in the newspaper and get anything set up before Memorial Day. And then we already have a meeting in June, which is the second Tuesday, and we've got that agenda full. We also have an executive order that will come to an end at the end of the month, the 30-day timeframe. I think what probably would be best is for us to look at what the status of things are at the next meeting in May. And then if we don't see any light at the end of the tunnel for purposes of being able to go live in June, then while we're having our meeting in May, see if we have a collective night that everybody collectively can say, hey, here's a night that would work. Perhaps you want to start at 7:00 and 7:00, then 7:30. That's up to you. Just a thought. And then Jane could look at the list and contact those people that have been waiting. And if they say that's not a convenient night for me, fine. And when we have that extra meeting, we will put on the record that this is a special meeting that we've selected because of the circumstances we are under and because of the fact that we missed a number of meetings. But it is not something that is going to continue once we can get the agenda back in order. Because I think I agree with Jane. I think you're going to see that there'll be an influx of of applications come come June and July. So that's just a thought. Put it on the agenda for a special meeting, and we can discuss it during the board comments or at the end of the next meeting, and we'll know where we are at. Nothing, nothing's going to happen between now and the next meeting with notices and everything else. So that's just the idea.
Yeah. I would totally agree with Bruce as he's much smarter than I am, so I always agree with him. But I also think that we need but I also think that we need to be very realistic with where we're going to end up going over the next couple of months. From my count to date, we've missed five meetings, right? So we should really look at how we can pick those up. And the second is, Jane, I don't know if you've had any discussion within the village level. How do we even have a meeting in the courthouse? If we all need to be six feet apart, that probably means that we are not going to be able to have four or five or six, you know, six applicants all of the time based on restrictions when it comes to people coming in to the building. So we will probably find ourselves at a point in time where we will maybe be having in-person meetings and virtual meetings if we're ever going to catch up.
This is true enough. I have a similar thought there, Greg. However, many people might be coming with an applicant, one professional, two professionals, so on, so forth. I think we're going to need a little help in managing crowd control, and that would probably be with the police department to say how many people come in or how many can queue up in the hall or in the anteroom next to our courtroom. So the number of people involved with each applicant, if that's just one or two or three, it might be more. And so how many are coming is something else that falls onto the list of things Jane has to document for us. And then we know whether or not we can have that on a given night. Two applicants might have five people each, and where do you put them?
Well, why don't we start? If I may, folks, we have the courtroom. We're going to need two rows for us just to be at six-foot centers. All right, we can't all sit at where we do now. But then we have X number of chairs. So you start laying that out, and you know how many people you can put in a room. And that's your limiting factor. Then you talk to the applicant and you say, this is what I've got. Can you make that work? Because this is where you're going to have to sit. All right. So we got a physical space. We have to manage the space. We can't just let somebody show up and say, well, I brought my brother-in-law because he'd never been to one of these. You know, it's define the space, define the seating available, and then the applicants are given that and say, what can you achieve within these confines? Otherwise, without a plan, we've got nothing.
One of the problems you have, this is Bruce, is that under due process, anybody can come into that meeting, so you couldn't stop them. I had one board attorney tell me what they're going to attempt to do when the day comes that they can have a meeting back in a room is that they're going to stagger an application. So they're going to say to Mr. and Mrs. Jones, you're on at 7:30. And then they're going to say to Mr. and Mrs. Smith, you're going to be on at 8 o'clock, but we will call you, and you'll stay out in the parking lot until you come in. And then there's an agenda posted on the door for anybody who walks up and says, if you're interested in this application, this is approximate timeframe that it's going to happen. And then somebody goes out like the town prior, I guess, and says, you know, here you, here you, the Smith application is on, come on in. So it's going to be cumbersome again with the six-foot requirement. The good part about Ridgewood compared to some of the other towns, you've got a very large room. I mean, there's some towns that have very small rooms where they do this now. They can only bring one application at a time, not because of COVID, but because they've got, you know, 20 chairs in the room. So I think that's something that we could, we could figure out when we're allowed to go back live. And one of the things that's been talked about is the fact that you're allowed to go back live. We don't believe that that's that they're going to then say thou shall not have a virtual meeting. We may be able to elect to continue this way. And we might all feel more comfortable doing it this way until we're at a situation where the social distancing is is not a requirement anymore. So it's again, I think it's an unknown.
Yeah, one thing we could consider.
I tend to though. Sorry, Sergio. For me, in span, I would not want to do this for too many hours. Going. So if we do agree to do virtual fill-ins or even meetings, two hours, I mean, after that, I don't have the attention span either. Now we'll start looking outside. So we can fill in gaps with two-hour meetings.
I think if we have a plan and some thoughts organized, we can present it to the council, I guess, and say, when the band is lifted, this is how we would propose to go forward. If you've got a plan, you might actually get a shot. Otherwise, we're all going to wait for them to make up a plan. And that'll never happen.
I like the idea of if we're permitted to go live, but we choose to continue doing Zoom meetings, that we consider only having those complex applications be live, and then maybe the simpler ones we relegate to a Zoom meeting. You know, this is going to be a while before we are all comfortable being in crowded spaces. It may be a year. It may be quite a long time. So if we could knock out the, and I hate to say easy because we never know, right? I mean, sometimes we sit there for half an hour arguing about a little shed. It happens. We we think, we know it's easy. We think it's complex. Sometimes we're wrong. But the ones that are clearly complex, maybe those are the ones we have live, and then the ones that we think we might be able to get through doing Zoom. We do that and kind of mix and match.
That was reasonable.
That's a good thought.
Very reasonable.
Using a Zoom meeting as opposed to a live one. You know, again, if the applicant will go with it, then sure, we can do a couple of short meetings. One Zoom meeting and one live meeting or two and two, whatever the schedule demands. But using it as an alternate on a regular night or a special meeting, Bruce said, I think both of those would be useful for us to clear up any backlog and get back into a normal routine.
The other thing I was thinking is because the public isn't going to want to, they're not going to want to hear, oh, the zoning board doesn't like to have long Zoom meetings because they're touching Spanish, short or whatever. What we could do, so I would be hesitant to schedule a two-hour meeting. Someone might say, well, why can't you just go till 10:30? I say we, this is just a thought. Glad to hear other people's comments. I say we schedule the meeting for 7:30 to 10:30, whatever we, or we can move it to seven. But only put, say, two items on the agenda. And we're pretty sure that those two items are going to take somewhere around two hours. We give ourselves a flexibility for it to run longer if need be. But we don't try to jam as many applications into that window as possible. We, you know, we kind of, instead of setting a time limit, we just set an application limit and say, we think, I don't know what the right number is, probably not one. Certainly no more than three, maybe like two or three tops, and say that's what this this special meeting is going to take, these two or three applications. And then we have a number of those special meetings to try to then clear out that backlog of the non-complex controversial one.
That's a I think three, I mean, we had a, tonight, I think the three were manageable.
Right.
And I think that's the way you should limit it to is three.
Well, the May 20th.
Worst-case scenario, if you get done early. That's going to be, the next one's going to be tough.
Well, not on May 26. We're not going to we're not going to get done early on May 26.
Yeah, and I'm really talking about, like I said, this isn't, you know, I think what we're talking about isn't what's going to happen for the next month or two. I really think this can be six months, eight months. Who knows how long this is going to be? So we got to get through the ones that we have here in front of us. And yeah, you're right, May is not going to be a two-hour meeting. But once we start getting into the ones that have not been scheduled, we could start managing a little bit better. Jane, I'm sure you don't want to have four or five meetings a month in addition to the planning board meeting, all that go till 10:30, 11 o'clock. So that's something we've got to be mindful of as well.
Bruce, how do they do exhibits?
Well, we all have them. The person that is testifying at that point has the exhibit and explains that exhibit in front of us. They hold it up, and they point to it.
Is there like some type of
They can't bring any other exhibit in. They can only have the exhibits that have been posted. If they want more exhibits, then the meeting gets carried.
Is there a type of whiteboard?
Wouldn't they just show their screen?
All right. I was just asking if there's a whiteboard that they might have Jane on the Zoom that allows them to pull up the entire exhibit with like a pointer or something? I don't know. That's, I know in Google.
Can they just share their screen and?
There is a whiteboard, and they can share their screen and use their mouse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How do we not talk over each other? We have a hard enough time.
All right. So I was going to get to that. I didn't want to, I didn't want to do it tonight because this really is kind of just a brain scan. But my, my thought was when we're considering an application, that we do it kind of in a very formal way. So we let the applicant, so normally the applicant presents their case, and then we ask questions. But we're kind of loose, and we jump in with questions while the applicant is presenting their case. I think on a Zoom call, we we let the applicant present their entire case. Then we open it up for questions. And then my view is, I think I should just go down the row. I mean, you could do it alphabetical or by age or beauty or however, and essentially call on people and basically say, Gary, do you have any questions? And then Gary goes, and John, and then go down that row. And then everybody gets to ask their questions. And then, look, there's going to be times where we're going to have to have a little bit of a community, you know, a little dialogue, right? Because if Diana brings up a point, and Dan's got an opposing view, he may want to jump in. But I think we have to at least try to formally go through, at least for the first round, what is everybody's question? And then, okay, comments in deliberation. Okay, the meeting is now closed, and we're going to open it for deliberations. Let's go down the row. Do you have anything? No, move on and do it that way, because otherwise you're going to get what we have here, but we're going to get that with you know, applicants in front of applicants, and they may not yeah, they don't have the patience with it.
That's a very good suggestion, Sergio. I was thinking of the same thing. How do we control speaking individually and not over each other? So a roster that you could work from is a good suggestion. And just hold your thoughts until your turn comes up.
And you do the same thing when you're doing deliberations, do the same thing.
Right.
After everybody's done and the whole case is over, you just ask one at a time what, what, what your comments are and walk it down. And usually what do at board meetings is you pick a different person to be the lead each time.
Right. So we'll do that. And then obviously, you don't have to be compelled to make any comment or ask any questions. You could be Clarence Thomas, if you guys are familiar with the Supreme Court. He famously never asks questions for years. You can, you can abstain from asking questions or making comments, and you could just vote. But you will be called on just so that you have the opportunity to do stuff for each application.
I have a technical question here about this video. Maybe Dylan can tell us. When the applicant shows up with their professionals, how many screens are we going to see? Will it be just the applicant, the applicant and his lawyer on separate screens? Or will it be one screen that's shared? Then the planner maybe, or the architect? I mean, how many visuals will we see of an applicant?
Well, you get to control the screen as you want to. You have two options. You have speaker view, or as I call it, the Brady Bunch view. Right now, I have the Brady Bunch view. The speaker view goes to the camera that has activity or sound to it. So you'd have the control to do that. It's up in the top right corner of all this, of the, of all the videos. It says speaker view. And then there's a grid view.
Okay.
So that's one way. The other one, two for you guys, if we're wanting to talk. I saw one meeting I was in where everybody had backgrounds and said, like, a raising of the hand. So they were changing their background when they wanted to talk, and they were called upon by the person controlling the meeting.
Good idea.
All right. Does everybody know how to get to that greater gallery view that Dylan just described?
Yeah, I just did it.
Okay.
It actually works quite well.
Yeah.
My screen, I have everybody at the top, and then a large screen with, right now, your charming portrait.
Right. And then if you swipe, I'm using an iPad, but if you swipe with a mouse, I think it's a click, you can click over, right? Because this shows nine. But then if you swipe over, you get more people. So in theory, when there's an applicant, Greg is in Cayman Islands, you will just keep swiping, and you'll keep seeing people. It might be a good Yeah.
I mean, is this, it might be overly simple, but does it make sense to be on mute unless you want to speak? And then you just click unmute. So whoever's watching, the board chairman could recognize whoever is unmuted? Does that make sense?
What about the chat?
That's a good idea, Dan.
Does the, does the chat work where you can just type in? I don't know. I just typed something in. I don't know if anyone saw it.
I saw it. Did everybody see that, Isaac?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if that's another option where we just, you know, someone has a question. All the people that have questions just type in, have a question, and then you, you're the moderator of the meeting, Sergio.
Does everybody know how to change their background? What would they, what would you guys prefer? Changing the background to kind of raise your hand or doing what Isaac did and sending a chat?
The chat works nicely. It's just on the edge of the screen. Everybody knows what's coming up.
All right. Everybody agree to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. All right, that works. That way, so then we just agree that Sergio, you call on us. If we say we have a question, we're not blurting out, but you say, okay, Isaac, you have a question for the applicant, and I'll talk.
Yeah. And just everybody be aware that if I miss it, just unmute and interrupt. I mean, this isn't, this isn't Catholic school. Okay. So if if you have a real question, and, you know, I glossed over it, and we Okay. So if, if you have a real question and, you know, I glossed over it and we've moved on, just go ahead and interrupt. It's okay.
Dylan, when I hit the chat, does that go out to everyone that's on the Zoom meeting or just our, just anyone we've, I don't know how that works?
There, there's, there's a couple of options. You can, uh, do all panelists, which is just the people in this room are, that are panelists that are allowed to talk. And you can also chat to attendees if they, if you want to make it public to everybody. So there, there, if you click on, on the bottom left where it says two, there's a down arrow next to the name of who you want to talk to. You have all panelists and all panelists and attendees. So you just choose all panelists.
Oh, there's also a raised hand. Oh, look at that.
That's what the attendees would use to, if they had a question or they wanted to speak.
Okay. All right.
Hey, uh, Bruce, if the, if the chat, if the chat doesn't record, then we probably can't use it because of open public meetings, right?
That is correct.
But if you're just.
What if we just? I would just recommend using the raised hand.
Or either one. I think the way to do it is if, whether it's a chat saying, "I have a question," that's it.
Yeah.
And then raise hand, then what I will do is I will then pause and say, "Okay, Matthew Bandell, you have a question." And I think that that'll be on the record. And Bruce, is that acceptable?
Yeah.
The chat does have a record, by the way. You can save it.
Okay.
It's up to you.
Who sees that you have a raised hand?
Everybody sees the raised hand.
So I raised.
I can see right now that Isaac, Sergio and Diana have, yeah.
You have to have that button pulled up though, right?
How come I can't?
But you have to have the participants.
How do I see some?
It's a little blue icon in the left corner of the, of the video.
Oh, so you have to have that open though.
Yeah.
All right. So maybe I do this on the computer because that's covering Jane and Greg right now.
Yeah, computer, the interface is a little bit.
Yeah.
It's okay with me, Sergio.
I know. I'm, I'm used to doing that to you. Um, all right. So what else? This is some good stuff. I, I was thinking, Jane, what if, um, not to give you more work, I'm happy to help draft it. What if there was like a, um, kind of a user guide? One page that we can put together for applicants on, you know, obviously not just how to access Zoom. I think most people know how to click a link, but on how to present the case. Bruce, is that not permissible because it's, I don't know, outside of?
No, that would be permissible. I, I think it would be something that Jane would give to all of us and then it would be available to the public.
Right. Okay.
Even something as simple as making, putting all of your exhibits in one PowerPoint file and they just share that would be, you know, helpful.
Well, I have a pickier one on, on exhibits, if I may. Uh, you know, the, the PDFs on, and I have an assortment of software for dealing with drawing, but I can't break them out and rotate them. And, you know, getting lying sideways to look at the screen is difficult. Has anybody got a, a clue on how I can rotate these things so that they're right side up?
You mean to fix the PDFs that are posted?
Well, yeah. In other words, the stuff gets sent to us in an email. You open the email and then I load it into various pieces of software. So I've got them like a file that I can use during the presentation. But all this, the software that I have uh, does not allow me to rotate a PDF. So if somebody scans it sideways because it's a landscape picture and the scanner takes, you know, portrait only, then I have a sideways drawing.
Give me a second. Let me check something. So if I go to one of the, so like the photos on one of the things.
FDA wild.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Let me ring that up so I can see if I could do it with this computer and I can tell you how to do it. All right. So the photos are scanned sideways. I can do that. Okay. So it's that. I was going to share my screen really quick. So if you have Windows 10, it comes with Microsoft Edge. And so here's the photos. And of course, this is. So if you have Microsoft Edge, so say if you wanted to rotate the whole page up here in this, on this toolbar, you can rotate what is, uh, any of the PDFs.
Just click on it to rotate it 90 degrees each time?
Yep. Just keep rotating it clockwise.
So that's in, uh, Microsoft Edge?
Yeah.
You can also do it in Adobe. If you open the Adobe Reader and just hit, uh, view, and then under the view bar, it would say rotate view.
Mm-hmm. So if I go and if I download this and we'll put this on my PC. And then I'll open it and. Hit all these pop-up messages. That's just, just stop. I'm sorry. Give me one second. I apologize.
Oh, it's all right.
So on here, you have view, rotate, and then you can rotate the image. And then you can also zoom in. These are actually pretty good scans.
No, they're clear enough. It, it's just that, you know, it's easier to read Roger's zoning schedule when it's right side up.
Yeah. And I, yeah, you have the ability to do that with Adobe Acrobat Reader and it's free on their website.
Well, I thank you very much.
If you have any problems doing it, just drop me an email and I, I'll send you the link directly.
Okay. Thank you, Dylan. Any, um, I don't know, anything else? Do we miss anything? Is there any other thought?
One more question. Uh, if, if there's a person speaking from the public, do we see their image or just hear their, their video, uh, or, um, audio?
You can invite them in if they're on the video. If they're on with a computer with a video, we can invite them in as a panelist and you would see them. Or you can just do audio only.
I think it would. Be wise, this Bruce, it'd be wise to see them.
Now, if they're dialed in on a phone, all you're going to do is hear them.
Understood. No, understood. But if, if they have the ability to be on video, they, we should be seeing them. You're a prior fact. You're looking at their demeanor.
So should we ask the question, um, "Do you have the ability to show video?" I mean, I know I'm on work calls and some people just don't want to be seen, so they, they don't turn their webcam on. But if we see that somebody hasn't dialed in on their phone that they've dialed in through the computer, should we say we'd like to be able to see you?
Yes. Nothing wrong with that. If they say no, then we just accept it for what, what, what their position is.
Okay.
Good. Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Just one confirmation. Dylan, did you say there's going to be two screens at the applicant's table, one for a professional, one for the applicant, or one shared screen?
It's only the one, uh, screen that's talking. Uh, if you do the, uh, speaker view, it's only going to show the person that's talking.
Okay.
But if they're sharing their screen with their exhibits or their plans or anything, you'll still be able to hear both the applicant and their attorney or architect or whoever they bring.
So the audio will come in from whomever is speaking, but the video will just be what's in front of the camera?
Yes. And a shared screen, uh, takes over everything.
Okay, good. I have it.
Yeah. Anything else? Greg, were you raising?
I raised my hand.
I, my wrist, yes. It's, uh, not virtually, it's in-person raising my hand. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, certainly with everything going on, thank you so much to like Bruce and Jane and Dylan for like helping us put all this together and guiding us through this, uh, new and crazy time. So before we jumped off, I just wanted to say gratitude and thank you.
Absolutely.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Dirted.
Yes, definitely. Everybody's.
I have one sort of simple question. Bruce, is it a problem to swear somebody in verbally only with no video?
That's, that's, that's the problem. There's a statute that says that you must see the person and they have to stand and raise their right hand, and they can't do that with a telephone. So after a lot of discussion in the seminar I was in, the general concept is it's not following the statute. But if that was the only issue on an appeal, that nobody saw the witness sworn in, but they listened to the witness sworn in, I don't think a judge under these circumstances, if that's the only reason that, uh, is used to appeal a decision, that the judge will have too much tolerance for that. Because this is the same judge that's doing mediations and settlement discussions and motions by virtue of this type of virtual work now. So I think they'd probably, and nobody knows, but I think on a prerogative, the judge would grant an exception. So it doesn't technically follow the rules. That's correct. Yeah.
You could always submit a voice print if somebody questioned you.
Well, it's not what the statute says. It's that very clear, you know? That's the difference between our meetings and mayor and council meetings. Nobody's sworn there.
We know that.
Yeah. No, I mean, it's, it's very hard to conduct, uh, you know, uh, it's very hard to conduct what we do. It's basically like a trial. You know? Jury, jury trials right now are suspended. Okay. We all know why.
Yeah. All right. Anything else, guys?
No, no, that's it. That's all I have for tonight.
Stay safe, everyone.
Thank you.
I actually want to be. I wouldn't mind.
Motion to adjourn?
Duty on Zoom.
Wait, oh, I think I thought.
A jury.
Some, someone had a comment?
No, I said I wouldn't mind being called for jury duty through Zoom.
Yeah.
I got called, I was called for, uh, in April and I got the, uh, an email that says, uh, you know, "Don't, don't report and we'll see you in three years." Yeah.
Lucky dog. All right. So, uh, motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All right, all in favor? All right. Well, everyone stays safe and healthy and we will speak to you in next meeting.
Two weeks.
Yep. All right. Take care, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Good night. Stay safe.
Good night. Bye.
Thank you, Dylan.
No problem. Have a good night.